Hello, my name is Meg Martin and I'm the Executive Director for Interfaith Works.
Hi, and I'm Corey Passins. I'm the Program Manager for Interfaith Relations with Interfaith Works.
Thank you for being here today. Interfaith Works is a nonprofit organization, a coalition made up of 30-plus faith and spiritual communities in Thurston County. We've been in operation since 1974 and work on all kinds of social justice and peace initiatives with our community, including addressing homelessness, as well as many other efforts.
This show is Lean in Olympia. It airs twice monthly, features conversations at the crossroads of justice, humanity, and belief. You can check us out on our Facebook page, our website, and our YouTube channel to check out past episodes of Lean in Olympia.
So, we are super excited today because we are joined with our final panel of candidates running for the Olympia City Council. Thank you all so much for being here with us today. Interfaith Works does not and will not endorse a specific candidate, and we are committed to working together with anyone who is elected to represent our community. So, I am excited to be joined today with Robbie Kessler, running for position number two, Candace Mercer, running for position number four, Cori Gani, position number six, Spence Wiegand, position number seven, and Wendy Carlson, position number five.
Thanks to each of you for being here today. This space is offered for you to share a little bit about who you are and about your platform for how you'd like to help improve our community, and we'll be expressing questions and prompts that are from the ethics and the values of our interfaith network.
Each question will be stated, and then the candidates will respond in a rotating sequence. We ask that each response be no more than two minutes in length, and we will hold up a sign when you have 20 seconds left. Feel ready?
All right, so that will begin. We'll start from Corey to Corey. And Corey, what central values do you bring to this role that will guide your decisions in civic leadership?
Well, as a retired deputy fire chief out of the Air Force, 22 and a half years, 19 years overseas, the core values of the Air Force are integrity first, service before self, and excellence in all we do. I served in the military for 22 years, came back home to Olympia, and so those are the values that I've lived and continue to live. So, those, I think, would be great values on city council as we look at the challenges and opportunities our community faces moving forward.
Thank you.
Thanks. Please, Candy.
I know Olympia and its values. I've been an activist in Olympia for 25 years working on social justice issues. I worked for almost a decade in Palestinian solidarity with the Olympia Rapids Sister City Project and the Rachel Coy Foundation for Peace and Justice. I helped produce a large mural downtown on State Avenue. I was a writer and editor for Works in Progress, and currently I'm affiliated with Grub. I've spent four years reporting on housing policy and homelessness in Olympia, and I've spent six years reporting on every high incident, every high-profile incident involving OPD, and starting with, in 2015, with the shooting of Andrew Thompson and Bryson Chaplin. I walk my talk when it comes to reducing suffering. I'm all about relationship building, and I meet every person as an equal. I treat everyone the same regardless of their identity. I put people over ideology. I'm intellectually honest and an independent thinker. I'm able to absorb complex information quickly and absorb it and put it into context. I value fairness, and I speak against injustice at great personal cost. I'm not running on my identity, but I'm a low-income disabled woman. I will be the voice at the table for this group that has not been represented on the council. I've stayed housed in Olympia for 10 years on less than $15,000 a year. I know what's working in the system and what's not working. I've listened to hundreds of stories, and I will govern for the best interests of all the city, not just the loudest voices. I love Olympia. I will fight for Olympia. This is our home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Spence Wiegand, and I suppose that the central values that I hope to bring to guiding me with civic leadership are, number one, honesty, hard work, and an approach that is common sense-related. I'm a big believer in collaboration and have spent 25 years in a career where, I'm a real estate broker, by the way, where you take people with differing ideas of how to get to a common goal. And there are disparate ways to get there, but if you can find sellers want to sell, buyers want to buy, they have different ways of wanting to get there, and it's all about collaboration to get people to the end goal. I would hope that the vision I bring to the city will be one that is strictly locally focused and not on wide, global, and national issues. I really want to take care of what's here in Olympia and what's happening here now. And I guess the last way I would describe myself is I'm a very Catholic person with a small c. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Wendy Carlson. I would really describe myself as very open, honest, with a lot of integrity. I have a real love for this city. I'm a fourth-generation Olympian. My family's been here for 110 years. I've given back to my community by coaching youth sports, being a part of my kids' lives, and really, you know, being a role model for young girls so they can look up to someone and see a confident woman. I've been gay since the mid-'80s, so I know what it's like to be marginalized. I've had things said and done to me over the years that nobody would want, have said or done, so I understand what groups like that go through. I was a community corrections officer for the state of Washington for 20 years. I think that the skill set that I have, we haven't had on the city council, my guess is ever. My job was getting people to services. The piece that I think we're missing right now is the accountability piece, but I have absolute compassion for these people, the homeless people, which I think is the number-one issue that's going on right now in the city. They are someone's brother, sister. They're someone's family member out there, and I think right now what the city council is doing is not compassionate towards them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robbie?
Thank you. So, in terms of leadership, I believe that it's very important to listen and learn and then lead, so I would want to make sure that the leadership style and approach that I would bring is one that's very inclusive and transparent. I am a member of the Skokomish Indian Tribe. My husband is a small business owner. We have two young children, and I would just bring all of that. In addition to my education and background, I'm an attorney. I've worked for the Chehulis Tribe for several years, and more recently as a nonpartisan council at the House of Representatives. And I just want to make sure that we are meeting people where they are at to make the government more inclusive, but also the outreach efforts in terms of communication is transparent and accountable to those that we serve.
Thank you.
Thanks. Great. There are well over 1,000 residents of Thurston County who have no roof over their head every night. They are sleeping in doorways, wooded areas, and places without basic necessities for human survival. So, this is a two-part question. When you hear this, how does this make you feel personally? And what actions will you take to decrease homelessness in the next term as Olympia City Council member? Candace, we're going to start with you.
Homelessness is the reason I'm running for council. I live in the epicenter of the problem in Olympia right now. I have at least 200 homeless people living in a one-mile radius of my house. I am outraged at the moral failure of the policies that led to this crisis. 87% of Olympians agree that the current policies are not working, and we need a new direction. Compassionate policy comes from dispassionate analysis. We need metrics for success. I will bring the heart of compassion to Olympia, but also the brain of analyzing what is wrong and what needs to be fixed. I'm going to have a relentless focus on affordable housing and homelessness. I want to increase stock and repurpose existing stock more efficiently, looking at cohousing and boarding houses as an option. I have a target that you should be able to get a locked, private room in Olympia for $500 and a one-bedroom apartment for $1,000. I'd like to set up a universal application program to ease the cost burden on runners and the risk to landlords, as also, as well as supporting cohousing programs. I've watched our city and county fail for three years to stand up an RV camp. It's time to explore privatized urban campsites to serve these people. We need to be honest about the street subculture and the challenges of serving that population. Right now, we're condemning them to a lifetime of homelessness. They're adapting to life on the street, and the longer they're out there, the harder it is for them to transition to housing. Finally, I want to switch from a survival mindset to a growth mindset. I want to inspire people that they can do better. There is compassion in boundaries, dignity in reciprocal relationships, and integrity in personal agency. Strong individuals make for strong communities.
Thank you.
First of all, I think it's heartbreaking that there are people in our community that are living the way that many of our homeless are. As Wendy mentioned earlier, they're someone's family. I would like to see some of the money that's been dedicated to the Housing Fund and some of the federal money that's coming down the pike as part of the COVID rebuild be dedicated to rent assistance so that we can keep more people who are currently housed on the verge of becoming unhoused in their homes. And this just makes a lot of sense to me because from strictly from a dollars-and-cents perspective, it's got to be less expensive than the money we spend trying to treat those that are already homeless. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think the question is, how does it make me feel? Like Spence just said, you know, it makes me very sad. One, growing up here, I spent my teen years downtown hanging out, and my kids, who are 19 and 17, just don't come downtown anymore. Why? Because people don't feel safe down here. Candy mentioned the survey. 77% of people don't feel safe downtown at night, and I want my kids to have the kind of childhood that I have. So, that makes me sad. It makes me sad also that people have to live like that because I think it's not compassionate. I've had addiction in my family. My ex was an addict. I did three years in Al-Anon, and I think there's a difference between having compassion and being codependent. I think currently, right now, the council is codependent, and we are not doing the homeless people a service. We need to get these people to services. There are, I think, different groups of people. There's mentally ill. There's veterans. There's families with children. There are different groups. You can't just lump them into they're all addicts or they're all mentally ill. There are very diverse groups within those camps, and I think we need to start reaching out to these people and getting them services. There are services that are here, but they're way underutilized. I come from a place of community court, drug court. When I made a call about community court, I asked them how many services were available, and they told me there's 27 right now. When I made the phone call, there was 50 people involved in those services, and I said, "Well, that's a pretty low number." And they said, "1,000 could be taken." So, we need to start getting those people to those services and really utilizing those services.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, of course, hearing this and seeing it personally makes me very sad, and I know we can do better. I believe many are living in conditions that are inhumane, and although I do not have all the answers, the city of Olympia, I do know that the city of Olympia cannot solve all of the world's problems, but we must focus on the things that we can do. We cannot fix years of broken systems and failed efforts at every level of government overnight, but we can do better. We can set good examples and lead, and we need some help. We need more collaboration with local jurisdictions, including Thurston County, other cities, and the state. I have a good amount of experience working in an intergovernmental way, and this type of experience is necessary. Specifically, I would advocate for programs that prevent homelessness in the first place and for services that help existing homeless people. I recommend and support policies that increase the supply of housing. I would work with other governments on a regional plan for mitigation sites and more housing, formulate a city budget that provides adequate resources to both crisis response specialists and first responders, and transition those in existing camps to housing or mitigation in sites in areas that make more sense for service delivery, environmental protection, and health and safety. And I would also like to maintain a reasonable level of public safety, and most of all, communicate a message of hope that shows that we are a compassionate community looking to solve problems. I've been studying the One Community Plan and appreciate all the work that went into it, and would like to see those plans laid out come to fruition in a way that is transparent and keeps the public informed of the action and progress. Thank you.
Thanks.
Can I get the question one more time?
Yes, definitely. There are well over 1,000 residents of Thurston County who have no roof over their head every night. They are sleeping in doorways, wooded areas, and places without basic necessities for human survival. Two-part question. When you hear this, how does this make you feel personally? And what actions will you take to decrease homelessness in your first term as Olympia City Council member?
I like that you said "first term" because I plan on being there for a while. But the way it makes me feel feels horrible. It feels disgusting. It feels like I want to, I need to do something. I want to do something. So, I did do something. I've helped two people out of homeless situations. I've invited a drug addict into my house through his recovery as he got out of Department of Corrections custody. So, I took action on my own to make a difference, to help that person. But what was different is that person came to the table too with a little something, a little want to and edge on his house. But building that personal relationship. What I see is a lot of people out there who don't have a network. I relied, living 19 years overseas without a family, I relied on my friends and my coworkers. We have groups that don't have a social network, or the social network that has been built in these camps is not a healthy one. It's one that continues to support addictive behaviors, support other things. We need to get people out, get them integrated into our communities because they feel, I empathize with them. I'm not apathetic about this. I think we should use empathy and put ourselves in their shoes. What would it feel like to feel ostracized from the rest of community? And so, we need to get them in. They need to do their part and come to the table as well, absolutely. But I think offering the services and showing compassion, showing love for that person and reaching out to them, "Hey, we want to help you. We want you to, we want you to use these services." That's how we have to approach this. I think the second thing we need to look at is our policies. Set a clear understanding of what is expected if somebody were to migrate to Olympia for resources. Much of the, we've seen the population grow in our county from 200 a few years ago to 1,000 now. So, the policies we set, are they making it attractive? Because labor statistics tells us people are smart and migrate for goods and resources. So, we need to be smart about the policies we enact and the expectations of people coming to our community because they owe something back, just like all of us owe something back to our community.
Thank you.
Thanks. Our next question, Spence, we'll start with you. It's related to law enforcement. What specific ideas and proposals do you have about Olympia law enforcement related to reform, budget, and accountability?
Thank you. I don't have a bunch of specific proposals, but I was really taken by the fact that this was one of your survey questions, so I'd like to circle back with you later and discuss how that factors into what you are doing as a faith community in helping our disadvantaged people. I am not a fan of defunding the police, and neither are the majority of citizens in the city of Olympia. The city survey recently released said that 70% want a higher law enforcement presence in downtown. And I'm pleased to see that now we have started stepping up the foot patrols. I think they're tremendous. It's great to see a law enforcement man or woman and see their face not behind a riot shield. I also am pleased that the police department has increased the crisis response team. I think you guys are in the trenches. You know the impact that those people have, and I'd like to see more efforts, more foot patrol, and more crisis response people working in the city of Olympia for the police.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Couldn't you, similar.
Sure. What specific ideas and proposals do you have about Olympia law enforcement related to reform, budget, and accountability?
Well, I'm sure everyone can imagine that I am pro-law enforcement. I worked very closely with law enforcement for 20 years. I worked with a lot of really great men and women, but I actually, I saw some stuff that probably shouldn't have happened, so I'm well aware that not every law enforcement officer is good, just like there's, you know, not great teachers or firefighters or any profession you can choose from. But I think we need to get back to having respect for law enforcement, and that goes both ways. Law enforcement have to, has to show respect, and they get respect back. I see myself kind of as a bridge. I've had many very honest conversations with my black and brown friends about what goes on, not necessarily in Olympia, but in this community and how they're treated by police officers. And to be honest with you, I was shocked. It was my own naivety that I thought that it wouldn't happen in this community, but when I heard those stories, it let me know that it does happen in this community. I've already talked to several people that are involved in groups that, when I'm elected, that I want to sit down with those people with law enforcement too, and really have an honest conversation about how they feel in this community, how they feel when they get stopped, what they're going through, what's going through their head, and hear from the law enforcement side. Concerning the budget, I would really like to see how much is on overtime because of what went on downtown over the last year. We spend a lot of money. After 40 hours, we're talking probably time and a half, if not double time, depending on the union contract. You know, what kind of budget, what kind of money is going into that budget? So, I definitely think that, you know, everybody can grow as people. Everybody can grow in their profession, and when I get on the city council, I want to have the best law enforcement agency in the state.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So, this is already a topic that I've been really engaged in listening and learning, and I believe that Olympia has the potential to lead the way in reimagining policing and what that looks like in order to create a more equitable community. For example, most people, including many law enforcement and first responders, agree that police should not be the first responders to a mental health crisis. The appropriate first responder would be a social worker or a mental health counselor. So, instead of putting money into law enforcement to continue to respond to a person having a mental health crisis, I do believe that money could be invested in mental health services and professionals who are better equipped to respond. Police reform is just one piece of criminal justice reform, and addressing all of the systems at play that often result in desperate impacts to communities of color is necessary, and it's a conversation we need to include. I think it's important to create a safe community. The Public Safety levy passed in 2017 is meant to fund a certain level of protection and supporting programs like the neighborhood liaisons, walking patrols, community court, and crisis response. It's important to make sure that the continued work in this area is community-focused and inclusive. I often reference the work that I did at the Chehulis Tribe to make sure that all voices were at the table, so it's important to meet people where they are. I would look at ways to increase participation from all people and communities, and I would like to create a better system for reporting and tracking that progress. The city will need to be prepared to budget for training and all of the services or, you know, reimagining those services into other departments. And I would like to make sure that we are mindful to the impacts of the city budget, also creating a really open line of communication with the legislature to make sure that the laws they enact are adequately funded. And finally, I would just like to see an increased emphasis on the community priorities. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, can I get that question?
Yeah, sure. What specific ideas and proposals do you have about Olympia law enforcement related to reform, budget, and accountability?
All right. So, the lens, we can look at this through multiple different lenses. The one I typically look at as a firefighter, as an emergency responder myself for 22 years, is they are brothers. They respond out, brothers and sisters. They respond out with this, ensure the scene is secure. Recent legislation has put a huge damper on that and is going to diminish greatly emergency response services to many people in need. One of the first roles of government, the primary function and role of government, is safety and security of its people, its citizens, and of its residents. With that said, I am not a proponent at all of defunding the police. I also have an MBA, Project Management Lean Six Sigma, all those certifications. What that means is that we look at ways to continuously improve how we perform service. So, I am not opposed to reevaluating. We should always reevaluate how we can become more efficient in providing those services of safety and security for our residents and for our community. I think our police department can use more funding for, as my colleagues have said, more walking patrol, more critical response team members, and more cruiser patrol, because oftentimes, when they're understaffed, the first thing to go is walking patrol. So, we need to pull those people off, that presence. And then the third thing that I would like to see, we've sought recently removed in many schools, but is to have community officers in the schools building public relations with our community, talking to them, engaging with them about what the interests are, what their interests are, what their concerns are, what really bothers them. It would go to Wendy's point of building relationships with our BIPOC communities and LGBTQ communities to say, "Hey, when you have concerns, we're your friends. We're not your enemies. We're not here to pick on you. My cousin is the sheriff in Douglas County, and what he did, his entire neighborhood is Hispanic. He engaged with the Hispanic community and got their buy-in, their involvement, and knew that he was an ally to help them with their struggles and their safety and security." That's how I would like to see things move.
Thank you.
Thank you. Candace?
As a progressive, I find the dehumanization and demonization of law enforcement to be very problematic. These are human beings. They're doing a very difficult job under tough circumstances. OPD is not the problem, but they can be a solution. I've done FOIA requests and read thousands of documents. I've reported on every high-profile incident involving OPD since the Chaplin-Thompson shooting in 2015. An outside board to review officer-involved shootings and other high-profile incidents is definitely something I would pursue. I feel that's reasonable and responsible. As to political violence, I've been monitoring OPD response since the anti-war protests in 2003. In general, I see professionalism, an adherence to current practice, and always an attempt to de-escalate violence. We need to make sure OPD has the resources it needs to keep Olympia safe. It is the epitome of privilege to want to defund or abolish the police. It shows an arrogance and a real disconnect of what it's like to be a victim of violence and need the protection of the state. To the people who want to abolish the police, I ask you, what would you do if you needed help? 70% of Olympia wants an increased law enforcement presence, and 77% do not feel safe downtown at night. People are not okay with crime being decriminalized, and there is great concern over the new Washington state laws and what they're going to mean for victims of crime. Victims of crime face injustice, and we must consider their perspective when formulating policy. Also, it's very uncomfortable for progressives to hear, but law enforcement does have a role in helping people with substance abuse issues. I have heard far too many stories from former substance abusers of the gratitude that they show their arresting officer for being the catalyst for them to change. They go to drug court. They have 27 programs available to them. I'm not going to ignore their success stories just because I'm uncomfortable with what they say about law enforcement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next question, Wendy. We'll start with you. Describe how you plan to engage with the various religious and spiritual communities in our region.
Well, I think in Olympia, we have some great churches that really, really want to take care of our community, and I think that's phenomenal. I think it's a great service that they have. But it goes back to my prior point that there's a difference between compassion and codependency, and when you don't give them a reason to get better, you stay there. And I would like to have conversations with the churches. And I would like to have conversations with the churches to see how we could better their process of, of giving services. For instance, I had someone come up to me and say, well, my church gives showers to homeless. And I said, that's great, because every human wants to have a shower and wants to feel clean. I said, why don't we make them a part of the process? And the process could be as simple as, you know, picking up 50 pieces of trash and then they get, them getting a token for a shower. Well, then they said to me, well, I have a 65-year-old who can't pick up trash. And I said, well, great, let's find them a chair and they can take the tokens for a shower. So it's not about, you know, dehumanizing them or anything like that, it's about making them a part of the process. I've seen it for 20 years. The minute they start to become proud of themselves and that they did something to give back to their community, the light starts to shine. And it might be a little teeny light, but as it grows and grows and grows, that's when we reach these people. And sometimes maybe we can get them to services and change their lives, and they can become part of our community. Because really, that's the ultimate goal for everybody who's in, on the streets, is that we want them to be a part of our community.
Thank you.
So religious and spiritual communities in Olympia are already great partners in addressing city issues. I think these communities can also be really good partners in outreach. And I think it's so important to create a community where, meeting the community where they are. And I would like to look at increasing that outreach effort by partnering with those religious and spiritual organizations. I think that they can play a big part in the kind of inclusivity and communication strategies.
I'm just so engaged with what everybody else says.
That's okay. Can you please describe how you plan to engage with the various religious and spiritual communities in our region?
I, I think one thing is they're all part of our region, so they're constituents, so they have a voice at the table. I think we need to reach out to them, be open to them regardless. I have a church I attend, but it's out of the immediate area. And part of, going back to what Wendy was saying, what I see in churches, everybody does a little bit. You know, you've seen the trick lifting somebody with two fingers? Everybody lifts a little bit and we can do great things. What I'm getting at is that when we have all these religious and spiritual organizations in our community, we need to all work together for some smart objectives. Let's look at what specifically we're trying to do as a community, what our strategic vision is, how are we going to measure these things? Is it even attainable, what we're trying to do, and is it timely? I think pulling those together, looking at goals, strategic goals together, partnering with them, what is it you want to do? What is it your church wants to do? This church wants to feed, or this spiritual organization wants to house, this organization wants to shower? Okay, how can we combine our efforts for a synergistic effect to benefit the individuals that are struggling? And get them to the services they need, get them what they need, and get them on a path to where they're living a fulfilling life as a member of our community? That's been my spiritual journey through life in the organizations I've dealt with. But I think we can pull in all spiritual organizations and all religious organizations in our community, and they can all have a seat at the table in providing some help, some services together, regardless of if, you know, denominations or just different spiritual beliefs. If the goal is ultimately compassion, empathy, and helping out the individual, and we have that common goal, we can work together towards that. And I would like those organizations to work with those organizations to achieve those goals.
Thank you.
I'm an atheist, but I have discovered I actually live a very Christian life by very Christian principles of reducing suffering, being of service to those who are in need of my help, sharing whatever resources I have with those who need them. I used to be a pretty hardcore atheist who was, did not understand the role that religion plays in people's lives. I did not understand that it is Christian values that led to the Enlightenment, which led to the liberal values that I hold so close to my heart, and which led to Dr. King's doctrines, which are the doctrines I have built my life around. As I've been campaigning, I've been connecting with a lot of different church families, and I'm actually even open to joining the right church family so I can be around positive people that are doing positive things. I have found being around people involved at the church to be very uplifting. I know how important the faith community is in helping our homeless problem. They have been at the leaders for over 20 years in setting the tone and providing services. What we need to do is we need to remove the barriers for the faith community so they can do what they do best, help people. Olympia has a very strong and creative do-it-yourself tradition, and churches are a backbone of that. I will work with the churches to help solve this problem. I will want them at the table. But we need leadership to inspire and support the hard work of the churches, and I hope to provide that leadership and cheerleading can-do spirit.
Thank you. Spence?
My answer is going to be quite terse. I really don't have a plan as a city council person to engage directly as an individual with faith organizations. I think we need to do everything we can to just stay out of the way and let them do the good work that they're doing now. But I do plan to have lots of FaceTime and talking time with the individuals that comprise those faith groups. And I think that's the most effective way to, to lead the city is to have conversations with the individuals that comprise those organizations as opposed to the organizations themselves.
Thank you.
Thanks. Robbie, we'll start with you for the next prompt. This is about access to government. Please tell us about your specific plans to increase access to government. How will you include racial and ethnic minorities, low-income people, folks who live in shelters and on the street, youth, elders, and marginalized people in planning for our community's future?
Thank you. So as I mentioned previously, I believe it's so important to meet the community where they're at and use existing communication channels to build a more inclusive outreach effort. As a member of a marginalized community, I've witnessed government decisions happening for the people without the necessary work that is required to actually say that decisions were made with the people. I would like to see additional efforts made to create work sessions or even council meetings that take place outside of City Hall. It's a strategy that I've seen firsthand in court systems and other local governments and even the state legislature where, when committee schedule, when committees would schedule work sessions in rural areas or in places that may attract the population that are most impacted by the topic of discussion. Barriers such as transportation, childcare, lack of internet access or housing, and lack of information should be considered whenever the city is intent to engage the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You know I want that.
Oh, I know. I got you.
Are you requesting a question again?
Yes.
Okay, please tell us about your specific plans to increase access to government. How will you include racial and ethnic minorities, low-income people, folks who live in shelters and on the street, youth, elders, and other marginalized people in planning for our community's future?
So I think this is a really important question because I, I can empathize with it greatly. I grew up, my parents divorced, I grew up as an army brat, grew up very poor, mother working three jobs to support my brother and I. And the only thing I knew about government was going into the military and being a cog in the big machine of government. And, and it was my responsibility to vote. That's about all I knew. Yeah, you learn a little civics in school and all that. But as far as being a part of government, I, I never thought there was access to, other than just voting. As I look back on that, and I think about how do we engage people in other, in other parts of our community, I think that having an outreach strategy, having, looking at churches, looking at other faith-based organizations, looking at other organizations within our community that already are stood up to represent those. Let's take, the mitigation site has a lead, a team lead or two leaders over there that are responsible for having the pulse and the feel of the folks in there, and so we coordinate with them. That's not to say everybody else isn't in there, isn't, shouldn't have access. They should have a direct line. Everybody should have a direct line to their legislators and their government officials, absolutely. But, so use current existing structures. There's a church up by my dad's house that is largely members of the BIPOC community. So there, there's a leadership structure right there that we can coordinate with, talk to, hey, what are your, what are your parishioners saying? What are your folks saying? How do they feel their access is? And then get the feedback from the organizations and groups themselves. What, what, what are the barriers? Because once we know the barriers, we can understand why they're there, what we can remove, or how we make it more accessible. So I think an initial analysis as to what the problem is, or how they're feeling, how people who feel disenfranchised, look at those barriers and then look at how we can remove them for them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Candace?
The, the city just released its community value survey, which I've referenced several times. And one of the reasons they blame the results of the survey is on poor communication from the city. The city feels that if Olympia residents knew how good they were doing, they would have a different opinion that would reflect in the survey. So to that end, they've hired more staff at a cost of $500,000 to get their message out. What they're missing, what they're not getting, is that only 14% of Olympians feel that the council listens to them and hears their voices. And they've done nothing in their new communication strategy to address getting voices in, not just pushing voices out. As to marginalized people, it's not the oppression Olympics, and I'm not running on my identity, but I have faced many challenges in my life, being disabled, being low-income. I get into several top-flight schools, including Columbia School of Engineering. I couldn't go because I didn't have the resources. As part of the LGBT community, I know what it's like to live on the outside and face that discrimination as well. So again, while I'm not running on my identity, my identity will inform my work. My platform, my candidacy is truly populist. I am running because people want me to. I am running because I have heard hundreds of stories of harm, and I will be a voice for those stories. I have listened. The current council hasn't, but I have. And I will bring those stories to the day, and I will govern with those stories. I have listened to Olympia, and I will govern for the entire city without discriminating against anyone for their identity, their race, or their political affiliation.
Thank you.
I'm going to have another brief answer here. The specific plans to increase access to the government for those that currently don't have enough of it, I think it is all part of better communication, more transparency, as Robbie has mentioned. And I was going to also share the statistic that Candy did, that only 14% of the city feels like the city council has their, their voice, or hears their voice. That's, that's a pretty damning statistic and shows that the issue of communication is not just for the communities that you serve, but for the entire community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think all those groups that mentioned in the question, we, we need to have those people at our table. I, I agree with everybody else that I have spent a lot of time in the last four months since I declared, I've, and talked to a lot of people. And a lot of people, that's exactly the sentiment, is that they don't feel heard. It's one of my favorite parts of running a campaign is meeting the people. And meeting the people, meaning on both sides of the aisle, you know, I'm just walking up to a door, I don't know anything about them. And having the conversations that I've had in the community and how they're feeling, you know, I think it's very important to, if, for instance, homelessness is our issue and we're making decisions on that, we need to have people at the table that have experienced that, gotten themselves out of it, what worked, what didn't work, you know, and, and run our ideas by them. I'm not the one to be making those decisions when I haven't had to worry about where my food is going to come from or my roof over my head. So I don't, I shouldn't be making those decisions just based on what, what I think. We need those, those people that have experienced those experiences at, at the table with us. The beauty of working for government for 20 years, I, was the product of those decisions sometimes, when upper management would make decisions without asking the line staff. And it affected us greatly because we were the ones doing the job. And so I've learned from that, that when you need to make a big decision that is going to affect a huge group of people, you need to have those people at the table, table helping you make those decisions. Now, we might come to a compromise and do stuff that we, you know, I, I might have to do because of where I'm at. But we need to start listening to every single person in this community, not just certain groups.
Thank you.
Did we make it around?
We did.
Oh, my gosh, I always, I end up losing track when we go around. Great, okay, so Cory, I believe we're going to start with you this time.
So you won't have to read the question twice.
I know. We're breaking.
Well, maybe, you don't know that yet, Cory.
Okay. Anything else in closing that you'd like our audience to know about how you plan on making our community a better place?
In closing, I think the last question was a great kickoff to how we make our community a better place, because the community is about all of you. You're electing a board to sit, you're electing members of a board to sit on a council of a $300 million a year corporation. You're asking us to look out for your security, make sure the infrastructure works, and make sure that there's economic viability, well-paying jobs, and plenty of housing around here. That's, that's what I feel I am applying for in the job and, and doing these functions. I think I'm the best candidate in the field, in my field for that job, based upon my experience. But what I want to do is I want people to know that, I want to bring civility back to having discussions, uncomfortable discussions, when we disagree. Because only through that friction are we going to, as a community, find a way to move forward in the best manner possible. Having my Lean Six Sigma certification, there's a few things. You go to GEMBA, you see what the problems are. That goes to your last question, asking about how do you get voices in for the change that's needed? You listen to everybody on both sides of the fence, if there are opposing views. We bring those opposing views together, and we look for the health, safety, and security of our community. That's our job, that's our function. And I, that is always what I would use as my guidepost for the strategy of our community moving forward. And again, we need all the voices we can get. There may be some frustrations at times, but we can be civil about how we address these things. We don't need to name-call. We don't need violence and vandalism in our community to get your point across. I understand the rationalization of that. I get, I get why they rationalize it, but I don't agree with it. And so I would like voices to come to the table, and let's have difficult discussions. Because I think overall, that will make our community much more rich, much more accepting, much more tolerant, and much more diverse, not just physically in appearance, but also in thought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The real crisis in Olympia is not equity, it's not homelessness, it's not public safety. I know that's a shocking statement to make, but the real crisis in Olympia is not those things, it's lack of leadership. And that is why I'm working to flip the entire council. We need people who are strong, who are going to be able to take care of Olympia and get us out of this mess, and heal and house our population. I'm a leader, and I've proven that I will fight for Olympia. I am both compassionate and pragmatic. I'm willing to be intellectually honest about our problems and rigorous in doing my homework and analysis and how to solve them. I have the spine to speak inconvenient truths, even when it comes at great personal cost. I am truly nonpartisan and independent. I'm a progressive who has done progressive activism for 25 years in Olympia, and I am committed to working across the aisle with everyone. To that end, I just got the endorsement of the mainstream Republicans, which I'm really proud of. Some might see that as a minus, oh, look at her, she's got that. I see it as a plus, and I'm proud of it because I work to reach across the aisle and be the force to break the polarization that's in our community. Some people dismiss me, or they think I'm operating out of hate for the homeless. This is not true. I am operating out of love. I'm one of the only candidates who's actually gone and I'm one of the only candidates who's actually gone into the camps and interviewed people. I've talked to dozens of homeless people to get their perspectives, and formerly homeless people to get their perspectives. I will always lead with love. I may make mistakes, but I will have, never have regret to my contact, the, my content, my conduct, because I am leading with love. My goal is to reduce suffering in the world, and no one will work harder in Olympia to solve these problems than I will. If you vote for me, I will be a force for good and a force for change in Olympia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, finally, I get to bang my drum a little bit here. Affordable housing, affordable housing, affordable housing. It is a fact that we are going to be growing no matter what, whether we like it or not. And they anticipate that we're going to have 21,000 new Olympians here in the next twenty-five years, half of which will be low-income people. Low-income being defined that they're making less than eighty percent of area family median income. Right now, forty-seven percent of our city, almost half, is paying more than thirty percent of their income on housing, which is the highest point you can be if you're going to be evaluated for a home purchase by a lender. We need to build up and not out, and in the main corridors of our city, where people can take advantage of transit. It is the single biggest equity issue in Olympia right now, bar none. And I, again, would like to see more attempts made to not only serve the homeless that you guys do, but to keep people housed. There are a lot of people on the verge, and I go back to the form of rental assistance. And if, no matter how good the work is that you do, if we don't get our handle on this, your population's going to explode in a not very short time. So it's going to be about affordable housing for me. That's the one thing that I can bring to the city, I think, a better understanding of how to do that than my opponent for certain. Thanks.
Thank you.
So I'm not a politician, nor did I ever want to be a politician. But when I started to spend time down here during the pandemic, and I saw what was going on in my city, I really started to pay attention, and that's when I decided to run. You know, like I said, my family's been here for 110 years, and I really felt that it was my duty to step up for my city. I, I know some in the community want to paint me as someone who's not compassionate to the homeless, and that's the furthest thing from the truth. I've lived it in my, my personal life. I did work to get myself better with my codependency. That's why I see it in the city right now. I am compassionate to the homeless. I have done it for twenty years. I, it was my job to get people to services and hold them accountable, and I celebrated when they became a part of our community. Like, it was a, it was a really big deal for me, in my heart, when they became productive people in their community. So it, it, it really kind of makes me angry when people say that I'm not compassionate, because it's the furthest thing from the truth. I think I bring a skill set that we have not had on the, on the council for, for a long time, if not ever. Like, I've, I've worked with, I am a marginalized community. I have won over, I have reached across the aisle with people that are told that I, that they shouldn't be talking to me, and won them over, because I did it in a respectful manner. We did it, we both were respectful, and it's exactly what I want to do to this community. I want to reach across that aisle and listen to every single person that's in this community and govern for every single person in this community.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. So in closing today, I just want to thank you for this opportunity. And a little bit more about myself, I got my undergraduate degree in sociology from the University of Washington, and then went on to study law on a full scholarship at Arizona State, because I really wanted to have the, as much knowledge and training as possible to help people. I was very intentional about majoring in sociology and undergraduate studies, and then studying law, because I really liked the study of human society. And after getting my education, I do believe I've really helped people. I was general counsel for the Confederated Tribes of the Chehalis Reservation during a time of tremendous positive growth. And I more recently used my professional skills to serve the people of Washington as nonpartisan counsel for the State House of Representatives. All of my work and volunteer experience have been very community-focused, and I want to be a leader that leads in an inclusive and transparent way. I'm prepared to think critically and work collaboratively, and I just want to let everyone know, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. My contact information is on my website, and I'm always happy to engage further on anything. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Well, thank you to all of our candidates who are here today, Corey Gani, Candace Mercer, Spence Wagen, Wendy Carlson, Robbie Kessler. Appreciate you being here and your time today, and this has been our episode of Lean in Olympia for this month.
And to everybody watching, thank you for being with us, for engaging in this very important time in our community, hearing the voices of all of the diverse candidates. We hope that you will stay in touch with Interfaith Works at interfaith-works.org. We've got a lot of exciting stuff coming up over the course of the next year, so please stay engaged, and we'll be back in a couple weeks with the next Lean In episode.
Thanks.
Thank you.